Item A B is a study that's been going on for quite some time now as it relates to the boulevard that will be replacing the I-40 corridor in downtown Oklahoma City. I think many people have been following this through the process and it's been a long engagement in which we have brought in additional consultants and engineers to try and make sure that the best design gets selected and just a reminder, we're asking this street to do an awful lot of different things and I want to shed my appreciation to everyone that's had input in this and that's from the general public who has shown up in the meetings, our city staff and the planning department and also in the engineering department and trying to figure out the best way to address this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity as well as all the consultants that have been brought in from the outside and looked at the sometimes seemingly overpowering engineering issues that have to be addressed.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. If you recall, last summer, we presented some information on the new boulevard route and concerns came forth because of the fact that there were some additional, the old I-40 just come down and there was a, the concept at the time was to build bridges over Classen, Western and Reno and there would not be frontage to the boulevard in those areas. And so based upon those concerns, there were several meetings last July, staff was directed to bring in a consultant unconnected to the process and so we went out and did a quick procurement process. I know a couple of council people were involved in helping us review a couple of those firms that came in and we hired StanTech out of National Farm out of Phoenix who are engineers and urban planners to take a look at it and they came up with several options and with that Eric will give a presentation this morning on that process and those options.
Okay, good morning Eric.
Good morning, thank you Mayor and Council. I think as we introduce the boulevard project to many that are maybe becoming more familiar with it, the action that we're taking today is just on a section of the boulevard. There's actually five different sections as we kind of look at that. We've talked about a west section and an east section of the new boulevard. Those would be what connects Interstate 44 and Interstate 35. But the center section, probably the area that we think is more of the boulevard proper, has actually been broken down into three sections. The Western, Classen, Reno area is one of those. We also have the downtown core, that would be the section that's between the new Maps 3 Park and the new site for the convention center. There's also the crossing under the existing railroad bridge that is going to be a separate contract and a separate study to make sure that we've got a pedestrian access into and out of Bricktown. So as I present this to you today and as we talk through the discussion about Western, Reno, Classen and just realize this is just one section of the boulevard. There's still ongoing design, there's still ongoing discussion with the boulevard. Our partners with ODOT are here with us today as well to support the process and to make sure that we're following form. So I would, you know, I know that we have in the audience today, we've, I see David Strebb, I see Paul Green, I see other representatives from ODOT. Want to also give some thanks to city staff. We've had a lot of involvement with the planning department, Russell Klaus, city staff with Debbie Miller, Harold Skidmore and Rachel Moser and really there's been a lot of individuals that have been involved from all facets of either engineering, from planning, from transportation aspects as well. As we look at the outline, the presentation that we have for you this morning is actually the same presentation that's been condensed from what was held at the December 3 public meeting at the Coca-Cola Event Center. As Jim mentioned, this process started many, many months ago when ODOT made a presentation on the entire boulevard project back in August and this section of the boulevard came under heavy concern from a lot of the citizens. If you recall, there's, there was an original bridge that I'll show you just a quick photograph of here that was going to be constructed, but with that, we did go through a process of hiring StanTech. They are both a engineer and a planning consulting firm. They were given a lot of leeway on the options that they're going to present to you today and to show you through that process, but there's going to be a summary of the process, a brief alternatives discussion, the evaluation criteria, how the alternatives were developed, a recommendation, and then I will wrap up in the end with just some other outcomes. I bring this slide back up as this is what really started this conversation about Western, Classen and Reno and what was originally proposed as a part of the presentation in August was a bridge that exceeded more than 1,000 feet that was going to span all three roadways. It was going to go over the top of Western, over the top of Classen and over the top of Reno Boulevard. And there were a lot of concerns that this might re-divide downtown Oklahoma City. For those that have watched the deconstruction of Interstate 40, that has been removed today and it's opened up a lot of new areas, a lot of new areas for development, a lot of new areas that have potential for pedestrian friendliness. And so as we moved forward with those goals, as we engaged this study, those were some of the prime criteria for us in looking at something that still would move traffic, something that we could put down to grade as much as possible. We've talked about this before, but the boulevard as it extends from west to east will be built on its original alignment, but it'll be at grade approximately at Douglas Boulevard, just west of Klein. It will have a recommendation today that elevates that over Western, but it'll return to grade very quickly west of Reno as it crosses downtown, as it goes through that central core section and into Bricktown. But this again was the reason for the study was to find alternatives to the 1,100-foot bridge that was originally proposed. And so as we get ready to introduce this today, I'd like to bring Bill Ferris to the podium. Bill is with StanTech. He and his partners have come up with a good evaluation and I think we can answer questions here at the end.
Thank you Eric and Mr. Mayor and Council. I have to admit, it being a bit inspired with as much apathy as we see in the world today, it was quite invigorating to see almost 300 people at the Coca-Cola Center providing positive feedback, providing just general input on the process. The initial thrust of the project was really familiarity, walking the project corridor, driving the street grid, becoming familiar. Without an adopted comprehensive plan or an adopted master plan, we used our initial efforts at garnering planning documentation and zoning documentation as we looked to evaluate this particular area of the city. And what I'll show here, I-40 relocated to the south, we looked at the major arterials, minor arterials, collectors, we looked at the existing bus routes, the potential streetcar alignment and transit hub to get a better understanding of especially the commuter With regards to the key elements in what I'm going to call the confluence area, we have our east-west movements along Sheridan, Reno, Third, and then of course, in a very congested area, we're introducing the boulevard which also is an east-west corridor where it bisects Reno about the middle of your screen. Then of course, we need to consider the north-south movements, the thrust from Exchange, from the stockyards, Classen coming from the north as you see with the blue arrow, and then of course, over the course of time, you've had a reduction in access from, I believe it was six initial access points off of the old I-40 to just the two you see here, one at Shields and the other at Western, again in that confluence area. All of that happens in a very tight window. We wanted to look at land use patterns throughout the boulevard corridor and those really were originally developed in response to a limited access freeway, the old I-40. All of the adjacent businesses take their access off of parallel collectors and arterials as the old I-40 was elevated. So those parcels back up to the boulevard corridor. This results in a number of aesthetic concerns as the view from the boulevard will be into the rear yards of industrial and general commercial businesses. It not only wouldn't help these businesses to get access from the boulevard, it would render them double-fronted, which would raise numerous site planning and operational problems without significant offsetting gains. So we looked at the land use throughout the corridor, I'm dropping those in here. One of the key elements I want to bring your attention to, I'll drop it back in again, is this purple area. The original ODOT design was looking more at a six-lane facility, what is proposed now is a four-lane facility. So where you used to have an interstate at very wide width, we're now looking at more of an arterial-type corridor with only four lanes. Obviously, that will increase at intersections to accommodate left turns and right turns, but the advantage you see here in those purple areas is for future development and I want to make sure that the city considers that as we move forward. Then we wanted to ensure that when considering the land use, we emphasize the work ongoing with the corridor shore and some of the other map projects. There needs to be a reinforcement of that because that is an excellent program that's being developed here in the city. Now we look at the specific areas along the corridor, the boulevard downtown zone is being handled separately. We have the transition zone, which was part of our study area, and the difficult confluence zone, which will be the focus of our discussions, and then the access zone further to the west of Klein, but as a entrance into the downtown. The objectives of our study, reinforce the corridor shore as I mentioned, consider pedestrian and bicyclist access, certainly support redevelopment opportunities and economic growth, also look at improvement to the overall transportation efficiency and circulation to and from the downtown core. While enhancing those traffic movements, look at improving some existing system deficiencies. So I have to give a lot of credit to city staff. We were in essence, unencumbered and I am that unconnected consultant that the city manager referenced. We were able to brainstorm a variety of alternatives that kind of fell into these categories. A grade-separated roadway similar to the old I-40, grade-separated intersections, much shorter spans of bridge length, roundabouts, which we have designed, planned and built across the entire country, parkways, a more unique indirect left option, limiting some access. And so we came up with a variety of alternatives. I'll just touch on a couple. This one here in the upper-left corner, we retained the existing overpass at the Klein ramps. We connected the boulevard through a roundabout to California and tried to retain the spine of Exchange with dual roundabouts here. In the lower-left, we had a series of roundabouts where we realigned Western onto the Classen corridor and we realigned the roadway here to try and provide some separation for all of the traffic movements. In the upper-right is more of the old ODOT concept, multiple bridges at Western, at Classen, and a very large structure at Reno. Those would all have been connected with retaining walls. The lower-right, again a massive roundabout at a key location along the corridor and a relocation of the Reno alignment down to Third and back up again. Another series of alternatives, again a realignment of Western onto the Classen alignment with a grade-separated structure at that location. As you can see, we were again unencumbered. This is a bizarre realignment of Western way over to Klein and then back over to Classen. We didn't want to inhibit anyone's creativity as you can see with that one. Here we have again a spine along Exchange up to the boulevard and then in the lower-right, a massive roundabout here at this confluence area. The result was roughly 38 alternatives and suboptions and we needed to filter those alternatives down to something that we could ultimately recommend. So we looked at these evaluation criteria, right-of-way impacts, the functionality of the roadway network, emphasis for future development opportunities, limiting as much as possible elevated roadway structure, looking at pedestrians and bicyclists, improving the existing network deficiencies and addressing major event traffic. So we were able to reduce those 38 alternatives down to seven reasonably quickly, but we needed to further refine that list. So we added some additional evaluation criteria, as shown here. Reno and the boulevard must be through movements through downtown. Western must remain as a connector to the new I-40 and through the implementation of those additional criteria, we were able to get down to four alternatives, which I'll show you in just a moment. But the reasoning for getting to four alternatives was to allow us to do a more detailed traffic analysis. City staff was kind enough to go out to all of these intersections bulletized above and count traffic, literally every single car that approached the intersection, through, left or right, all of them were counted. What we did then was distributed that traffic onto a future road network that included the boulevard. We wanted to account for, and the industry standard is to look out 20 to 25 years, so we grew that traffic at 1% per year out to the year 2030. The 1% growth rate is much lower than you'll find in a lot of cities, but that represents the fact that there's a fair amount of build-out here in downtown Oklahoma City. So we looked at the traffic patterns and the volumes of traffic on the roadway network and applied them to each of these four alternatives. Alternative A, the boulevard is big yellow line coming through here. We have allowed for access along, southbound on Klein to westbound on the boulevard and from eastbound on the boulevard to southbound on Klein. We have the boulevard going over a realigned Western to Classen roadway. We have a significant intersection at Reno with minor access at Chartel and Lee with a signalized intersection at Walker. To show you in a little bit better rendering, and thanks to our colleagues at ODOT for this, this is looking east at downtown and shows the tree-lined boulevard where the profile goes up and over Western with short retaining walls on either side. Looking in the opposite direction, we're standing near the Reno intersection, which is again at grade and will retain roughly the same grade and then the profile will start to rise, go up over Western and then back down at roughly Klein. Alternative B was a very similar intersection, I'm sorry, alternative. Again, we're looking at a grade separation at this location here and this alternative, Western, would go over the boulevard roughly a half level higher with the boulevard being depressed roughly a half level. And we show that here. We have, this is the Classen-Western bridge over top of the boulevard. Again, you can see the retaining walls are relatively short and then the boulevard is depressed and goes underneath. There are some impacts associated with this, some utility impacts, some longer retaining walls along the boulevard. Here at the Horn Trader, they would not be allowed to have access directly onto Western because of those retaining walls, but they'll be able to retain access on Reno. Looking west, similar, we have Reno at grade with the boulevard and then the boulevard would depress as it heads toward the Western bridge. Now, alternative C, the layout is very similar, but everything is at grade. So at this yellow circle, we have a typical signalized intersection from the signalization standpoint and I'll show you. This is a reasonably similar-sized intersection, 63rd and the Northwest Expressway. A couple of things I would like to note, the upper picture is taken from this red dot location, but on this lower-right picture, you'll notice we have six lanes, I'm sorry, five lanes on this roadway and I believe we have eight lanes on this roadway. It's similar in size, but still smaller than what would occur here. In the north-south direction, you would actually have nine lanes across, that's two directions. And on the boulevard, you will have either six or seven. That encompasses the through lanes, left turn lanes, each movement would have a right turn lane, the left turn lanes in some approaches would be dual, dual lefts. Alternative D, again, very similar components at Klein, Reno, Walker, Lee and Chartel, but with a significant roundabout located here in the middle. We struggled with the roundabouts from the standpoint that to the west of the roundabout, on a daily average, you have about 40,000 vehicles total, both eastbound and westbound. That reduces to roughly 30,000 to the east side. The issue really is more the function of the Western, Classen alignment, which has the connection to I-40, but commuter traffic wants to disperse up Classen and we're looking at 25,000 to 30,000 vehicles on that. Initially, we started with a two-lane roundabout. We then added right, free-flow right turn movements on all approaches. Then we went to the next level and added a third lane within the roundabout and at that point, we felt that the roundabout could function for several years, but when you consider the fact that your biggest expense on roadway infrastructure is the pavement, we felt that you would need to be ripping that roundabout out within the next 10 years and we couldn't, we couldn't support that particular approach. And we do have other options. The recommendation is alternative A, that is the grade separation of the new boulevard over Western, realignment of Classen to be in the Western corridor, the connections I mentioned at Klein, elimination of a few portions of Exchange, Classen and Western to facilitate the boulevard development. It provides superior development opportunities along the boulevard, less retaining wall along that frontage. It improves the pedestrian walkability of the Western corridor because there would not be an intersection of Western in the boulevard. You would be able to walk beneath the structure as opposed to a large intersection that's nine lanes wide where you would probably not be able to make it through on one cycle of green time. Fewer utility impacts, less retaining wall length, and then it maintains traffic flow out to the year 2030. It integrates into the surrounding transportation network. It corrects some of the deficiencies, especially the Sheridan, Classen and Sheridan-Western, the intersections there are extremely close together. Fundamentally, it has the ability to change the image and character of the corridor and provide a greatly enhanced arrival experience downtown. We believe it supports and serves the existing corridor businesses while leveraging some of that surplus right-of-way that I showed you in purple earlier. And it complements, enhances the downtown core that's being developed under some separate projects. With that, there are a couple of other outcomes, but I'd like to turn the podium back over to Eric to conclude.
So in your packets today is the StanTech report. It includes the 38 original options, it includes the seven that were considered and then the final four with a detailed description. There were some models that we were able to show to the public on December 3. Due to timing this morning, we've chosen not to show those to you, but they are available and we can, we can go through those again. But the traffic model support the recommendations. Alternate A and alternate B have a similar traffic model where the traffic is supported. C is the intersection option. It does function, but from a pedestrian standpoint, it's not very passable. And then option D with the roundabout option, it would function for some time, but it eventually fails within about a 10-year period when you use the same traffic and the same growth that are applied to the other alternates. There were about 244 10Ds at the meeting on December 3. There were several comments that were received. They're continuing to be sent in either through email or through letter and ODOT continues to receive those. But when we look at the other outcomes, there were some other things that really came from the study that we think that would be well implemented in this area of the boulevard. We had shown previously an alternative of the elimination of Exchange as it approaches Western Avenue. And there's a unique opportunity for us to possibly consider in the future a roundabout option at Exchange and Third. This would be in the area, the farmer's market area. This would be a roundabout in the size that would be similar to something that we have already experienced at Walker and 10th, something that we think that might encourage some development in the area. It would also take care of that intersection in having something that would be more place-making and something that would be very central to that area. The other outcomes that were previously discussed is the realignment of Classen and Western. That helps us really mitigate a lot of congestion that's occurring on Sheridan today with those two intersections that are very close together just north of the McDonald's on the west side of downtown. It would help eliminate one of those intersections, providing a better flow of traffic to the entrance to I-40 from Western. So we found several other outcomes that as a part of the boulevard would hopefully be handled by ODOT if we're prepared to make that recommendation today, but we also see some other city projects in our future that might also help enhance the area. So with that, we do have staff available, we do have the consultant available. I know that we have ODOT representatives as well, so if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them at this time.
I had a question Eric on the 1% growth rate. How, can you elaborate a little bit more on why that figure was chosen?
As Bill mentioned, we actually went out and took current traffic counts while the study was being performed and so we had the latest traffic information and I can let Bill answer a little bit more detail with the other studies that they've done, but I think what you'll find is traditionally a 2% growth rate is chosen for traffic studies like this, but due to some of the development that's already occurred in downtown and to take an approach that would be most reasonable for Oklahoma City, it was reduced to 1%. So we are still planning for future growth, a boulevard that would function from a traffic perspective, but at the same time, we didn't overestimate that, something that would be in an undeveloped downtown.
Okay. Do you want to say something?
If I could just comment a little bit about the timeframe, there was an article in the paper this morning, I think that I'd like to follow up a little bit. The original timeframe for the whole I-40 project was that the new I-40 was to be in place in '12, the deconstruction of the boulevard was to be done in '13 and the new boulevard would be up in '14. That's the timeframe we've talked about for quite some period of time. Actually, the ODOT beat that and the new I-40 was opened up in December of '11 and the deconstruction is completed and was completed in '12. But because of the delays for the last six months for reviewing this fourth section of the area, we've lost about six months in the process and there's going to be some further environmental review that's required and that could be another six to eight months to do that. So that will impact the study. In my conversations with Secretary Ridley both last Friday and actually I had a conversation with him about 7 o'clock this morning, they have taken a look at where they will be and there's going to be a lot of moving parts, but assuming the environmental review is completed by September, which is what they think is a reasonable timeframe, then they think that the end sections, the section one, which gets you from Bricktown out the east side, and section five, which gets you west of Western out on the west side, could be under, out to bid anyway in December of '13 and under construction shortly after '14 and could be done toward the end of '14 and so you'd get the beneficial use of those projects. And at the same time, they think that the second project, which is the bridge underneath the railroad, could also be done in that same general time, although that would probably take a longer time to construct that. Section three, which is the main area of the boulevard downtown, whichever that at-grade portion that we've all talked about, is still being looked at and designed at this point in time. We've had meetings over the last couple of months with our consultant for the park, our consultant with the convention center, our consultant with the modern streetcar to take a look about making sure that that's all well coordinated and we've got the right solution on that. And then section four, which is the area that we're talking about today, you know, we don't have a direction as of yet as to where that's going to go, so that would be a little bit later in the design. So he thought that section three and four would be completed later than the December of '14 and would be into '15, as late as late '15. In the paper this morning, he said yesterday it could have gone to '16. I said, Gary, last Friday was, it was late '15, how do we get into '16? He goes, well, it hasn't been designed yet. And so we don't know exactly, but it could be, you know, we just don't know at this point in time. I did point out that one of the options that we're considering today is a less of a construction project that only has one bridge instead of three bridges and is going to be easier designed. It only has one bridge instead of three bridges and is going to be easier design and easier to construct. And so hopefully, that at the end of the day, that we can minimize that time and maximize that time. But he still stands by his late '15 or, or early '16 number, I think, is, is the official position of ODOT as, as we sit here today. And so I just wanted to clarify those timeframes a little bit before we go in further, just because of the newspaper story this morning.
Okay. Here's what I'd like to do. I know we have several council people that most likely want to talk. We have some citizens. If, to the extent the council has questions of the engineers and planners in the room, why don't we take those? Then we'll go to the citizens, and then we'll come back for comments from council. So questions, then we'll hear from citizens, and then comments from council before we vote. And with that, are there questions from the council to the engineers involved? Yeah, Larry, then Ed.
In the process, I know Eric, who, who can address this. In the, in the early days of, of this situation, the, the roundabout option was a very popular alternative being advocated by a number of people. And your study, I think from the consultant's standpoint, indicates that that is not a, as good as alternate A. In the latter days, I've had some communication from some folks who have advanced a concept called the grid concept. Could you get the engineers to speak why the grid concept is not as good as alternate A, or is it as good or better? What, what, how does it compare?
So the, so the grid concept, if you, if you look at that as an alternative, would be a no-build option of the Boulevard. As, as we've discussed in the past, we're moving forward on information that was decided back in 2002 when Federal Highway Administration issued a record of decision with the relocation of Interstate 40 on alignment D. And one of the mitigating factors of that decision was to construct the new Oklahoma City Boulevard on the former I-40 right-of-way. So although the grid option is, is one that, that was even considered by the consultant, it's not one that we proceeded on as we would lose that connection to downtown. And some of those mitigating factors and those things that were discussed earlier in the original EIS was reconnecting businesses that lost downtown access. There is an opportunity that, that, that might be possible, but we're seeing extreme traffic delays at Western Avenue and at Gaylord today. Boulevard construction's absolutely critical to help alleviate a lot of the congestion that's occurring either in the AM, PM morning commute traffic. We're also seeing heavy delays when we have major events downtown, whether it's a Thunder game or something other that, that is significant in getting cars into and out of downtown. So I wouldn't suggest that the grid option is one that's impossible, but it's definitely not going to solve the traffic delay issues that we're having today. The street capacities and the street network, I don't believe are adequate to support the amount of traffic that we are experiencing now, and we do need, we need the Boulevard as a solution.
Thank you, sir. All right. Ed, you have a question, then Pete.
One quick question, Mr. Ferris. Can I ask you, after the, the public meeting on December 3rd, did you receive any requests to do any additional traffic simulations from staff between December 4th and today?
I, I believe we did look at Lee Avenue to determine whether there would have a, a benefit or a detriment to adding additional access at Lee, which I think is, is we showed on the alternative, we were looking at allowing at least a eastbound to southbound right and a westbound to northbound right.
And what, what did you find as a result of that?
That while, from a, from a purist standpoint, limiting the access would be preferred, the Boulevard did function adequately with, with adding those right turn movements.
You didn't receive a request to do simulations with variable amounts of growth rates, trying to figure out different failure points, or to perform simulations where you didn't do a no-build alternative, but just didn't do a no-build of the curvilinear portion between Klein and Walker? Did you receive a request after December 4th to run such a study?
No, the, the request that we received was, let's look at incrementally the traffic volume from today, well, at the time, 2012, incrementally each year with a 1% growth rate all the way out to the year 2030.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask, just for some clarification historically and about procedurally from Mr. Strebb? My, my understanding of the NEPA process is that ODOT is currently in the preliminary stages of the development of an environmental assessment, which would assess for social, environmental, and economic impacts of the alternative design.
Yes, sir.
The, what the city council today is doing is offering a resolution of support for a preferred alternative. The, the city council doesn't have the legal authority to ensure the implementation of a particular alternative.
Now, my, my understanding, Councilman, is the, the city through, has requested through ODOT, due to the comments, as Eric Winger mentioned, the comments we received at the first public meeting that we had at the Coca-Cola Events Center, where we received a lot of comments on looking at something different in the Western Avenue area, which then resulted in the city hiring StanTech. And ODOT, if you will, in simple terms, kind of stood down and waited to see where this, where this study took them, took the city. And we were, we still are awaiting input that the city might have in that particular location, not on the entire Boulevard in a whole. There has been working groups and process in place between ODOT staff and city officials and stakeholders, et cetera, to look at how that Boulevard would want to look for the city in the future. We do have an environment, I want to remind the council, we do have an environmental clearance, a record of decision for a six-lane Boulevard. And, and to, to remind folks, we had similar instances in other portions of this I-40 project. One of them is the pedestrian bridge. In the environmental document, it was envisioned something a little different. Oklahoma City desired to do something like the Skydance Bridge. We went through, altered the environmental document, and that, that bridge is in place, and it's great. We did a separate environmental document to do the Lincoln Bowers Connection, which was not in the original record of decision. We have also added, as, as the project has moved forward, we have additional ramps at the Agnew area also, which is in response to the, the businesses and people at the, at the stockyards. They felt that that was a better project. All of those things that I just mentioned were not in that original record of decision. And I see something similar to that as we go through with the Boulevard, is what are, what are the modifications and things that have grown and changed, what needs to be done? But I do need to, you, you are correct, Councilman, in that once we receive that input, the department is going to have to do the environmental analysis for that entire Boulevard. The input that's being discussed today is a small portion of that entire Boulevard.
Right. So the ultimate decision lies with the Federal Highway Administration as opposed to the city council today? I mean, and so you'll take this, which is basically the city council's preferred alternative, and combine that, you could add additional study. You would then have one to two more public meetings, and then you would perform an environmental assessment in which you determine whether there are significant social, environmental, or economic impacts. If there are none, you would file a finding of no significant impact. If there are, then you would need to proceed, the preparation of an environmental impact statement should commence immediately. You would then, if you found that there were significant social, environmental, and economic impacts as a result of this alternative, you would then need to proceed to an environmental impact statement.
If all those things fell into place, that, that would be correct.
Okay.
At this point, I, we, we see nothing that would indicate that at this point in time, because I think all of the things that have been discussed that I am aware of are relatively similar to the original concept that was put forth in the 2002 Record of Decision. There are some changes, and those changes will have to be evaluated, absolutely.
If, if there was at some point a legal injunction filed by whatever party claiming that the NEPA process hadn't been adequately followed, that, that legal action would come not against the city or against ODOT, but against the Federal Highway Administration. Is that correct?
Those proceedings take place in federal court. That is correct.
So the, the defendant would be the Federal Highway Administration. So therefore, it's in their, it's in their interest to ensure compliance with the NEPA process?
Correct. And they, as, as standard process, we work very closely with the Federal Highway Administration. We prepare the environmental document, whatever level it is, whether it's categorical exclusion, an environmental assessment, or an environmental impact statement, which we do very, very, very rarely. In fact, I think the Crosstown Expressway is the only environmental impact statement that's been done in the state of Oklahoma in the last 20 years. Very rare occurrences. But yes, we, we prepare the document on behalf of the Federal Highway Administration.
And the courts have recognized the reality of, of what they call bureaucratic momentum that may occur whereby one decision by administrative agency inexorably leads to and justifies the next, ultimately like a domino effect unless checked. In other words, the, to predetermine the outcome is frowned upon by the Federal Highway Administration. If they find that something was done to predetermine the outcome, that, that could be a potential stumbling block.
Certainly predetermination, I, I concur with that statement, but I do want to remind the council that the Boulevard was a whole, in part and parcel, a contiguous part of alternate D. The Boulevard was not a separate add-on. If everywhere you look in the environmental document and the Record of Decision, the Boulevard is included in whole as part of alternate D, which is now open. And I do want to reiterate, Eric talked about some of the problems at Western Avenue and, and Shields, and, and I want to remind the council that we're only partway done. I mean, the department is excited that the old Crosstown Bridge is out of service. We now have a much safer facility for the traveling public. But the, the way that the Boulevard handles the traffic to get folks in and out of downtown was an integral part of the traffic design when we designed the access points on the Interstate 40 that you drive on today. Western Avenue or Shields Boulevard may have been designed very differently if the Boulevard had not been part of that option. So that the, the envisioned traffic flow to get folks to downtown, the Boulevard and the handling of traffic on that was a key component in that original decision.
So asking you about that original, that Record of Decision in 2002, basically, instead of treating the Boulevard as a major federal action in and of itself, as you were just saying, the Boulevard was treated as a mitigation step. It was treated, I-40 was relocated, and then as a mitigation to help move traffic, as you were alluding to, the Boulevard was, was treated as a mitigation step with no independent environmental assessment or environmental impact statement of its own.
I, I disagree with that comment just a little bit, because I don't want to jump out and say it was pure mitigation. Because as I said, that Boulevard, every time alternate D was described, evaluated, or the environmental effects were looked at, that Boulevard was a key, was a in-whole part of alternate D. It wasn't like alternate D was evaluated, and then the Boulevard was put in later as a mitigation. It was a key component of alternate D, and it's described as such in the environmental document.
When I read, it didn't have its own separate EA or EIS. Is that a fair statement?
No, it was part of the EIS for alternate D.
Okay. When I read the EIS, I'm, I'm not seeing the impacts of the Boulevard addressed. I, but...
I, I guess I could, to, to help alleviate that concern, that the Boulevard as described is within the existing right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
And that would then lend itself to the minimalist impacts, if you will, because there was no additional property required to construct that Boulevard as we envisioned it in 2002.
Well, let's talk about the purpose and need seg, segment of, of the EIS in Chapter 2, because StanTech goes out of their way in the, on the first page of their report to say, quote, "One of the challenges for this study has been the fact that there isn't consensus about the proposed Oklahoma City Boulevard's purpose." Is it a fair statement that in the purpose and need section of the EIS, there is no purpose and need for the Boulevard stated? There is no section that addresses, what is the purpose and need of the Boulevard in the EIS?
I, I don't recall for sure, but I know, I know, Councilman, one of the key concerns and one of the key, I'll say, benefits of alternate D, and, and it was a huge concern back in 2002, from 1998 to 2002, to ensure that the citizens could get downtown, to ensure that they could still ingress and egress to all of the facilities, workplaces, and everything that was downtown. And those concerns were due to, if we move the Interstate four or five blocks south, could folks still get to that, that downtown core?
But, but as you pointed out, things have changed. Downtown development's changed. The, we've gone from a six-lane Boulevard that was 272 feet wide to something quite different. And in the 10 years since the Record of Decision, this city council or any body has not issued a specific purpose and need statement. Is that correct?
I'm not aware of a specific purpose and need for the Boulevard, no, sir.
In 2005, the Oklahoma City and ODOT entered into a subsequent agreement, which had, which had multiple obligations on, on the part of both parties, including that ODOT would construct a pedestrian bridge between Robinson and Walker west of Union Station, which then now changed to east of Union Station, that we would, that ODOT would build a six-lane Boulevard, again, 272 feet wide in some portions, that the city would prohibit parking on that portion of the project within the corporate limits of the city on Page 2, or on Page 21, or Page 5, I'm sorry, that the city would, would allow the use of the Boulevard constructed on the existing I-40 alignment to be utilized as a detour route for incident management as necessary. And that's, that's the portion that you, that's, that's referenced as it being, be able to use as an emergency route.
Correct. And I, and I can expand on that, and I know Eric and I have talked about that specific provision in the agreement. And a lot of our interstate facilities in, in the urban area, we have frontage roads and, and various locations in, in a lot of cities and here. And I think the, the impetus there, Councilman, was if there is an incident on the I-40, whether it's an accident or something happens that we can't run traffic on it anymore, we wanted to have the ability to take some traffic along the Boulevard route if in some case something drastic happened on the interstate. For example, on other locations in interstates, if you go I-35 north by Frontier City, let's say, and there's an accident or something happens on I-35, you have the ability to take traffic onto the frontage roads while, while whatever happens on that interstate is maintained. And I think that was ODOT's logic in, in part of that agreement was, hey, okay, we, we would like the ability, if, if need be, and something happens, to detour traffic onto that Boulevard while we attended to whatever might have happened on the interstate. That was the logic there.
To detour some of the traffic or, or the I-40 capacity onto the Boulevard?
Obviously, as much as possible. You're going to try to get people to take Interstate 240, or you'd get them to take I-44 around the north, obviously, but, you know, some by, you know, some that may need to get downtown that would have already, that would have exited at Western or at Shields, certainly the Boulevard would be more beneficial for them than sending them all the way up I-44 or all the way south on I-240.
But it's not that we're trying to move 90,000 cars, which is the vehicle per day count of I-40. We're not trying to move 90,000 cars through a corridor with a 25 mile an hour speed limit. We would use I-40, or sorry, I-240, 235, I-44, Kilpatrick Turnpike, the rest of the grid, as they pointed out, four lanes on Sheridan, four lanes on Reno, four lanes on Southwest Third, all within 800 feet. You would use the grid to disperse the traffic?
We would try to keep interstate traffic on the interstate as best possible.
You would, okay, but if you couldn't use I-40, you would try and keep it on the Boulevard or disperse it through all those?
Well, someone that's traveling on I-40 from Amarillo to Fort Smith, we would hope they would get off on I-240 or get off 44 and go around the city one way or the other.
Okay.
Someone who is wanting to go downtown, and the interstate is closed, and they're used to taking Western or whatever, or local traffic, and, or they're caught there, we would want to have the ability to take them over to the Boulevard as an alternate route.
Okay.
And that, that was the logic in that agreement.
Okay. If I could ask Russell some questions. So, so then 2009, we had a downtown walkability study, and we had Jeff Speck do that study, and he's a consultant on the Boulevard. And he comes in, and on Page 41, he says, "Mistakes the city's about to be made. Building the Oklahoma City Boulevard is currently constructed. 96 feet of unmitigated pavement at the center right-of-way that's 272 feet wide. This largely unprecedented solution represents the apotheosis of the fear of congestion school of traffic planning in which the free flow of vehicles overwhelms all other considerations. This plan could further be improved by limiting the number of through lanes from six to four. It must be remembered that whatever capacity the Boulevard provides, this will all be new capacity. The interstate is not going away. It's merely moving. This street can handle as much or as little traffic as we want it to, and four lanes will produce an environment that is far more pleasant than six." And so after that study, the And so after that study, the movement began to change this to from six lanes to four lanes.
Well, to be fair, I think that the movement to four lanes was really part of the cordial process. And during the discussions with ODOT at that point in time, they were supportive of that as long as that capacity remained at six lanes, but only four lanes would be functional. So that was already, I would say, a given at that point.
Okay. So once we changed from six lanes to four lanes, now we've changed our Record of Decision, we've changed our 2005 agreement with ODOT, where it's clear we're going to change the project. That's rhetorical, and I already know the answer to that. Let me ask you, Russell, what constitutes a Boulevard? These agreements are all talking about the building of a Boulevard. So how do we define what a Boulevard is versus an expressway or an arterial? The agreements, everything we've been talking about, we've named it the Oklahoma City Boulevard. What is a Boulevard?
Well, in the sense of the way that Boulevards function in every other part of the world, a Boulevard is a very grand street. It's not just, it's not, doesn't have functionality solely for moving traffic, that it's part of a place. And those great Boulevards, whether it be the Champs-Élysées or the Bakedira in Barcelona, those are defined by the place. So it's the roadway, but it's also the way that the development adjacent to the roadway interacts with the roadway. So it's a larger, it's a larger animal than just the roadway itself, which is sort of the normal roadway function. So the way that the roadway is constructed, whether it included a median or whether the verges are, they have a special treatment, but more than any of that, I think it's the buildings and the way that they interact with the roadway. And at this point in time, of course, you know, you build the infrastructure of the Boulevard, but it's going to take a long time to actually create the atmosphere of a Boulevard.
So the, it's more than just the road. It's the adjacent land use that defines, that makes it a Boulevard as opposed to an expressway?
Correct.
So I'm reading a book that came out of MIT called The Boulevard Book, and they write, "Boulevards do not make sense where buildings do not face the street. In fact, the major difference between Boulevards and ordinary arterial streets are that on Boulevards, access to the abutting process is not limited, and there is no stipulated distance between intersections. Arterials discourage direct access to abutting property, suggesting instead that access be provided from side streets. These standards result in large stretches of development that turn their backs on the main roadway." Now, when I read the STANTEC report, it seems that they're describing an arterial and not a Boulevard, when they say, quote, "At the most basic level, the properties along the corridor don't need the Oklahoma City Boulevard for access. If afforded direct access on the Boulevard, they would become double-fronted, causing significant practical-functional security and site planning difficulties. The functional issues associated with access and circulation will persist due to the established land uses and adjacent lot configurations." Does that description of what's happening between Klein and Walker constitute a Boulevard or an expressway and an arterial?
Well, if I were to characterize it at this point, you know, it would be a roadway. To convert it into what I've described as a Boulevard is going to be, is going to take a significant amount of time, for one thing, because that's not where the development focus is in the downtown area at this point. I think it's, in any significant sense of redevelopment, it's probably, it's at least 10 years, maybe 20 years away because we've got to develop cordial and the west downtown area. I mean, the roadway may generate some incidental development, but it's not of the type that I was talking about with a Boulevard where it's a mixed-use office residential, where it's putting life on that street. It's, I think that initial interest in development there is going to take advantage of the proximity, but the accessibility not being a normal arterial, I think, is a problem, and that's going to limit that as well. The further limitation would be the shape of the blocks, on that curvilinear portion, because all those existing blocks are already split, and those are difficult to develop, more expensive to develop. Most of the existing development, as STANTEC has pointed out, has its back door to the Boulevard, and you would have to turn that around, you would have to assemble the entire block or several blocks to be able to facilitate the right type of development to turn it back towards the Boulevard. So that's a significant challenge.
Do you think we're going to see the kind of heavy landscaping and building of the perimeter that would result in that kind of development?
Well, I don't believe the funds are in the Boulevard budget, the ODOT budget for that. I think theirs is just to build the roadway, and the amount of funds that we have dedicated are limited, and were intended to be directed towards that central portion. So I'm not sure that there would be much in the way of funds. I defer to Eric to answer that question, but I don't think there would be enough to create that Boulevard feel as such at this point.
When we had the elevated I-40 freeway, we had north-south movement underneath the bridges at multiple intersections.
Correct.
Do you think that there's been adequate study and traffic modeling of the north-south traffic movement and the rest of the traffic movement with the exception of maybe Western Avenue?
I mean, that does concern me because, I mean, there is, there's not as much transparency north and south as there was in the past. People are going to have to learn different traffic patterns to be able to move around there. As development does begin to occur, I think we're going to have to revisit that north-south capability because essentially from Walker over to Douglas area, there really, there isn't a full intersection there. Reno is a kind of compromised intersection where you can't directly go north, so...
You can't turn north. If you're traveling westbound, you can't turn north after you get past Walker until...
I think we've accommodated going at Lee. I'm not, is that the only one? So it's just a right turn, not a full intersection. So if you're trying to move from north to south, it's difficult.
Has there been substantial dialogue with the adjacent property owners about how traffic is going to impact their businesses or how?
I don't know. I haven't been part of that. I mean, there's been the public forums, and Eric may have had additional conversations, but I don't know if we've had, you know, a full conversation with all of those property owners and heard what they have to say about how they would have to change their movement patterns to move around.
You're familiar with this grid concept that Larry brought up, but it's not, because it's been voiced by many individuals, right? But it's not, I think, maybe, I want to clarify what Eric was saying, it's not a no-build alternative where you don't build the ramps, you don't build the interface with I-40 or I-235. You're just talking about the curvilinear or curved portion between Klein and Walker. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we had a mayor, 16-year mayor of Milwaukee, who oversaw the conversion of an elevated expressway through Milwaukee's downtown to an at-grade street, who's consulted in many, many cities about such endeavors, who rode up and down our downtown with our Public Works Director, and who advocated after that process of building interfaces with the highways on the east and west, but eliminating the curvilinear portion in the middle, that the curvilinear portion is what is causing all the traffic management problems, is causing the closure of streets, is causing the north side to be cut off from the south side, is causing, as you alluded to, the odd parcels of land, which is the same thing that we heard independently from architects and planners for years here, such as Blair Humphreys or Anthony McDermott, advocating for study of not building that curved portion, which is what the 600 members of Friends for Better Boulevard have been talking about at the December 3 meeting, online, in social media. That, to me, doesn't seem like it's gotten adequate study. And so I'm reminded of, when I was learning parenting, there was this Love and Logic course, and it would teach you to make the child feel empowered even though you had predetermined the outcome. For example, would you like to have dinner, would you like to have your shower before or after dinner? You're going to have a shower, but you make them feel empowered. And I think you and I, the question is, have we predetermined the outcome by limiting STANTEC to considering through movements, to where we say, would you like your through movement with a roundabout, an intersection, or an elevated bridge, but not studying at any, the curved portion? And so I guess, that's a commentary, and I can leave that for the end, but I guess what I would ask you is, do you think that there would be economic impacts, economic impact differences between not building that curved portion in the middle versus the Boulevard as a through movement? Would there be differences in economic impact if you didn't build that middle portion and you just had all that land for development?
You know, without that analysis having been done, it's hard to assess. I mean, what I can look at is what the pros and cons are of both perspectives here. One, with the Boulevard, as I mentioned, I mean, it is challenging to develop adjacent to it and develop that full Boulevard concept. That's going to take time to do because of existing conditions and the shape of the lots and the way the businesses are, and the fact that, you know, those businesses in that part of town are actually viable businesses. So I don't see them going away anytime soon until there's a demand that raises the property value. So I don't see that changing. You know, the advantage of, you know, the grid system is that all those blocks are reestablished, so the blocks are easy to develop when they're a whole block rather than a split block, and you've got your normal traffic pattern and with cars going north and south. So that would make, I think, some of the blocks that are currently not on the horizon in terms of development community, considering whether they have a possibility for development, that those may have a different value with a different, a different street system.
Is it fair to say, then, that the decision that's made will have a significant economic development impact? Whether we do a curvilinear road or we don't build something in that area will have different economic development outcomes?
It has a different, it has different outcomes. I think you'd have to do the assessment to determine whether those were positive or negative. I mean, you know, I think the main point of this study has been to look at the way that the traffic patterns move. You know, we haven't done that full economic development assessment. I mean, that, I don't think that's, you would consider that part of the scope, so...
The STANTEC was not hired to study the economic development analysis?
No.
So this was a study of the best outcome for the Boulevard as a through movement, not for any other alternative that doesn't build a certain portion of the Boulevard?
That would be correct.
How would it be faster if I'm driving, if I'm coming in northwest Oklahoma City, I'm coming in, I want to go to the Devon Tower, I want to go to the western portion of the Central Business District? How is it faster for me to come in on the Boulevard, be diverted further south than I need to go, down by the new Central Park, into 25 mile an hour traffic where everybody else is being forced to go, and then head north to the Central Business District, as opposed to a straight shot, in perfect alignment, a straight shot down California towards the Devon parking garage? How is that faster to do that?
I'd have to defer to the engineers in terms of, you know, the, what the travel time would be on that. You know, I think we all, in the way we travel, we all find the path of least resistance.
Well, if I don't want to move further south than I need to go, would it be reasonable to assume that one thing I might do is turn south on Klein and then head east on Reno, which is a four-lane wide street, and then head towards the Devon Tower or the Central Business District on Reno?
I think that's, that would be your earlier option, yes.
Which is then, basically...
It's not a direct route.
Which is then replicating the grid.
Correct.
People won't stay on the Boulevard, they'll get off on Klein and they'll go down Reno because that's faster. And then what happens to the intersection at Reno and Western if people were to do that?
It's going to have more traffic on it.
Do you think the...
You know, and I don't, I mean, there'd be more traffic there on east-west front then, and how that intersects with the north-south, there's so much traffic going north-south now that I'm not sure whether that puts undue stress on that intersection or not. Certainly, if you've got more traffic coming from east-west, then that would indicate that could occur.
Do you think the phenomenon of induced demand in terms of traffic movement is real? Has it been empirically proven?
I think it's been proven in most cases. It has applied to freeways, certainly.
So do you think the phenomenon of induced demand can have a deleterious economic development impact by rerouting traffic off of the surrounding streets onto the Boulevard and thereby pulling traffic, pulling customers away from commercial development on those surrounding streets?
That's a general negative effect elsewhere where you, if you make travel in one particular route, the easiest way to go, then certainly the traffic is going to go there, and that does limit your visibility, your accessibility to other parts of the city.
Ted, how much longer? Two more questions. They go out of their way to cite three times in their, three times, I believe, in their report that the lack of a downtown master plan is a shortcoming. Is that a priority for the planning department or why?
It is, it is a priority. It's something I've wanted to do for a while. I haven't had the right staff to be able to do that, but it's certainly a high priority. It's an essential tool for the next phase of, supporting the next phase of downtown development.
If the convention center were to be moved, how would that affect development along the frontage? I think you've got some land that's being, that's going to be held for future expansion. How would that impact development along the Boulevard?
Well, it's a, that makes it a completely different dynamic in that area. If that was not the convention center, then that would be, I would imagine, a mixed-use development. I mean, that's a very desirable development site there, so I think it provides you with a different context for the Boulevard, completely, in that area there.
Thank you.
At least that portion.
Thank you.
Right. Other questions from council?
I was prepared prior to, say, a week ago, to vote for alternative A without any more questions, but I've had some contact with some individuals that raised some questions that I would like to talk. One of them was under the title, "The Barrier Lives," and I got to looking at the situation, and I realized that one of the things that we wanted to accomplish was to eliminate the barrier that the old elevated thing, highway made. It made a barrier because it was visual and physical. It did not, there was not a barrier north and south because you had all those opportunities to go under it because it was elevated. It kept the north-south going, pretty much. What I'd like to know is how many fewer, and this is, these are just purely statistical, and if you could figure it out for me while this is going on, while I went and listened to them after we hear other people talk, but I'd like to know how many fewer opportunities to go north-south unimpeded there are with the plan we have now compared to the plan that was, compared to the old elevated interstate? Just a number. I mean, if there were five opportunities to do it before and now there are four, that's fine. I'd just like to know that because I think that barrier, I hate to, I hate to replace... Because I think that barrier, I hate to, I hate to replace a physical barrier that is there just because it's visual with one that is actually there because you can't get north to south. That, so that's my first question, and you can figure that out while we're talking. The other one is that, to this extent, I kind of agree with what Councilman Chidita's saying. The idea of moving traffic in and out has nothing to do, in my opinion, with what we do along this boulevard. It has to do with building those ingress and egress ramps on either end of it. So once we build those out, then that should eliminate the problem. The idea that, that we have to build all these, this whole thing has to be designed in such a way that it moves this traffic really is not, I don't believe that's true. I mean, I'm not an engineer, but it seems to me if you're going to have a 25 mile an hour speed limit for a major portion of this, then the grid works as well as this is going to work for this emergency that Gary talks about, and I think is reasonable. I think that's a reasonable concern. I just don't understand why the grid wouldn't work as well. And that the major function of how this is going to work to move traffic in and out is not those two end pieces rather than this centerpiece that we're talking here. That's a little bit commentary, but I, but I would like to-
I didn't hear a question there, but go ahead.
Yeah, no, I say that's a little bit of commentary, but I said I agreed with the idea that perhaps the, that we hadn't really looked at the existing grid with the ingress and egress pieces. Troubles me a little bit. The other, the other thing is, I would like to know, because I've said before that this process, this public process, has changed the, what's going to be built, no matter what, for the better. We're going to, it's going to be a better process as a result of what we've done so far. But what I'd like to know is, I'd like that quantified. How much, how much elevated, no access was there under the original plan that was the 2002 plan? And how much, how many miles or feet or yards or however you quantify it is under this process? Because I'd like to, if we're going to declare victory by supporting Plan A, Alternative A, I'd like to know, I'd like that quantified for me. What is, what is the amount of additional footage that we have that's, that has access? That thought of be a relatively easy-
We can do that.
Yeah.
There's several additional blocks. We can quantify that for you.
And part of this, and this is, this is a commentary, Mayor, and I'll shut up after this.
Okay.
Actually, I would want a request from you not to accuse me of being long-winded ever again, after this, after this morning. The, no, that's a joke, but. We only have one opportunity to do this right. This is a 50-year-long decision. And so I think a lot of this discussion, which may seem to be long, and seem to be long for, I watched out you and I know how I felt, it seems like it's gone on too long already, and we've got six more people. I think there's some value in that. We're not making a decision that's a six-month decision, or a five-month decision, or a five-year decision. We're making a 50-year decision here. That's what, that's what the last one did, and I think it justifies the kind of introspective look at it that we're seeing today, even though it may be long and tedious to listen to. I think it's justified. So if I could get answers to those, really quantify the impact of what we've done, I would, that would help me.
Let me get to some citizens who signed up to come down here. Fred Hall? Come on forward. I'd ask each citizen to hold their comments to three minutes, and we'll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Fred Jones Hall. I'm the chairman and CEO of Hall Capital, and I'm here to speak in favor of Alternative A. My three minutes is a little bit of a historical perspective. I believe that when my grandfather moved into western edge of downtown Oklahoma City to work on Model T cars in 1916, I think we've got some historical perspective on this area. I also believe I may be one of the largest landowners, as our subsidiary Fred Jones is one of the largest parts distributors, and its corporate headquarters is in this area. I believe that Fred Jones is the perfect confluence for this area of confluence to describe what is needed in this area. First, we made, we move trucks daily out of downtown and into downtown with automotive parts. We need this boulevard as an ingress egress for our business. At the same time, part of our business, part of our opportunity is development. So we need the accessibility of pedestrian traffic and accessibility for movement within that area of western downtown. So I believe that Alternative A does that. I applaud the city council for taking the extra time to look at these. These alternatives are better than anything we've seen before, and I think that Alternative A is the best one. And I also appreciate that we move expeditiously, because as the chairman of the chamber with David Strab, when all of this started out in the first place, we made sure that the boulevard was an integral part of this whole discussion of moving I-40. We need it, we need it expeditiously, and I'm here to support Alternative A, which I believe accomplishes all of those objectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Falk?
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. First of all, my name's Mark Falk, 803 Northwest 32nd Oklahoma City. I am a lifelong, and in fact, fourth-generation Oklahoman. I grew up during something called the I Am Pay Plan era. You guys, I'm sure, are all familiar with that. It was an era where, if you look up in Wikipedia now, it says that they destroyed hundreds and possibly thousands of what they called antiquated buildings in downtown Oklahoma City. Now we would call those historic buildings. We lost a lot of our culture during that time period. We had a very short-term vision during that time period. I've spent a lot of the last two years in New York, working on films and pitching Oklahoma City to New York, as a city that has changed its mind, rediscovered its roots, maintained its character, decided to recapture what we're unique and what is unique about our city. And I think that this, this is an opportunity for us to do one of two things. When I was growing up in the 70s here, I'm very near northwest, went to old class in high school, we were a city divided. We have always been a city divided. We were divided by 235, north and south, I-40 north, going east and west. It has always been that way. We were racially, economically, socially, in every way, we were divided. As we've done the maps project, we've begun to develop. But guess what we've done? We've developed the northwest quadrant again. We again have not been visionaries to become an inclusive city. We have not pulled all of our areas together. We have huge swaths of land just south of what was I-40 that is land that most people would call dilapidated. Other people would call those opportunities for development and opportunities to spread the growth south of what I-40 was. So I would encourage you to look at that. You really have an opportunity here. You have an opportunity either to be visionaries and to take a very long-term approach. I heard this mentioned as being a 50-year decision that you're making. A rush to judgment on this would be horribly, horribly misguided, in my opinion. My feeling is that if you stop and look at it, especially after being in New York for a couple of years, I realize that what connects that city and what makes it economically a, an alive city is that it is on a grid. There, on all of Manhattan, there are no divisions. They don't chop that city up into little squares. They don't chop it up into east-west, north-south. We have to get beyond that. We have to become an inclusive city. We have to allow development. Where are we going to bring retail development downtown? New York City thrives on retail development. We don't have any place left for it. We've turned downtown into office buildings to a large degree. Just south of what used to be I-40 is the perfect place for retail development to come in, entertainment development to come in, just like we've done in the Plaza District, just like we've done in Paseo, just like we're now doing in Film Row. Those, a lot of those old buildings are not just buildings that need to be razed. Some of them are buildings that need to be restored, and we have plenty of land that can become new development and bring in new buildings and bring new growth to the city. So I would encourage you, at the very least, to not make a rush to judgment here. Things have changed in the last few years since this project was conceived. Our city has grown. This is a long-term goal that you have to look at. And I would just say, you have a chance to be visionaries here and to set the tone for Oklahoma City, bring life back down to Oklahoma City, other than just during the day. This is a ghost town at night. That's something you need to remember. This is a ghost town at night. Bricktown is alive. Downtown Oklahoma City has nothing.
Thanks, Ted.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Russell Pace?
I live at 3101 Eaton Avenue in Oklahoma City. I feel kind of like George Clooney at the end of Brother, Where Art Thou? I think the decision's kind of been made. The boulevard needs to be straightened out, in my opinion, however. The, we're near the final laps of this race to make downtown and the boulevard a great city. I think we need to straighten it out. I think the return to the grid. I was down there yesterday on my bicycle, and as I walked and rode around, you look into the back of these businesses when you do the curvilinear solution. If you do the grid, you look in the front of some pretty cool old buildings. I think that's a superior solution. I'd ask that the council table the motion, and let's do some further consideration on returning it to the grid. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming down. Bob Kemper?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'll try to make as brief as possible. I very much appreciate the vigorous conversation that's taken place this morning, the efforts of ODOT and the efforts of the city in trying to understand this issue and come to grips with it. And I really want to commend Public Works on taking care of a couple of issues as an alternative to Alternative A, and that's the integration of Classen and Western, which I think is logical. And I might add that exchange is also rather a natural connection to Classen and that alignment. I stand before you people as elected officials in a rather unusual situation because I'm an unelected representative of a very important constituency. We have on Friends for a Better Boulevard, a significant number of people in Oklahoma City whose interest is in Oklahoma City. They, for, by and large, most of these people do not own property in downtown Oklahoma City, or let's say in the market area. They do not have businesses in these areas, but they realize this is a 50-year issue, and that we cannot make a mistake. In, as you know, for every letter you get, every comment that you get, there's probably 10, 100, maybe 1,000 people who agree with that sentiment, who never write and who never express their views. And this is what's happened with Friends for a Better Boulevard. I think I can unequivocally say that the overwhelming majority of people of Oklahoma City want this boulevard returned to some sort of grid. The curvilinear section that's going to divide north and south again, the elevated portion is something that they're really don't want. I have yet to have one, let's say, everyday workaday citizen come to me and wants to see an elevated highway. In particular, I think with Plan A, there's one great big flaw that Public Works is taking care of, and that was the elimination of part of Exchange Boulevard. And this was to the horror of the business people and the landowners in Stockyard City. That, coming off the Exchange Bridge is a grand entrance into Oklahoma City. And right now, there's only one good entrance going into Stockyard City, and that's off of I-40. So I'm not going to make my comments lengthy this morning, even though there's a lot to say about it, but I really commend the process. I think the majority of people in Oklahoma City would rather see as much of the boulevard and, as a boulevard, not as a throughway or a bypass, and that it should be returned to the grid system. And to rush this project, I think, is a huge mistake. I know it's taking more time than everybody wants, but again, as Counselor White said, this is a 50-year project, and we cannot afford to make another mistake. I just want to make one suggestion to the council and to Public Works and engineering that may help on some of this traffic issue right now with Western. I think it would be quite simple to have traffic going north on Western in the mornings for three lanes north, and the evenings, three lanes south. They do this in Dallas, they do this in other cities. And also utilization of General John J. Pershing Boulevard as it comes off from the fairgrounds. There could be signage that would require some signalization, but General John J. Pershing Boulevard could be a great reliever for Western. There's at present, let's see, one-stop sign and maybe two signalized between May Avenue and the middle of downtown Oklahoma City. It's, it has limited access, traffic can move fairly freely, there's some problems with it, but I think it's something the city needs to take a look at in the interim before we come up with a final solution. But once again, I got my three minutes in.
You're four and a half already.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for coming down. I'd like to turn my head this way and listen to the council. Pat, any comments or questions for the staff?
Just a couple of quick comments, quick comments. One is, I think the process was really unique. There was a lot of public meetings, a lot of public input. It has had an impact on the design of this project, and in my eight years on the city council, I've never seen anything quite like this. The second thing, we need to remember, this is a compromise, and nobody gets exactly what they want, but they get what we need. We need an excess, an access into Oklahoma City. We need the boulevard going the whole route. You can't chop a piece out of the middle of it. The boulevard could be a major feature in the development of downtown Oklahoma City. So I just would urge the, maintain the boulevard concept clear through downtown. Thank you.
Skip?
I would, I would agree 100% as it relates to the process. As I stated in an interview yesterday, I don't think there's been anything that's been before the city of Oklahoma City, prior to me, from my historical readings of policies in the city, that you have had this much engagement from policymakers, from those individuals who are concerned, citizens, from stakeholders. And so I think that, you know, this has been a great exchange in reference to, to what I would consider probably a beginning of new politics and new policymaking for something of this magnitude. But, and I think that there is one thing that Councilman Ryan mentioned, that I think we all, every last one of us know 100%, that is, the true art of policymaking in that is compromise. Nobody is going to get out of this with 100% saying that I got everything that I proposed, I got everything that I wanted. And so I think that at some point in time, you know, in light of the number of meetings that we have had, in light of the number of consultants and the number of outside experts that have come in and looked at this process, at some point in time, we've got to sit down and say, we can agree to move on. I'm scared now to even call it a boulevard. I don't know whether or not we're talking about, we're talking about a street, a road, a roundabout, or a corner, or just a path. But at some point, we got to agree on that. And, and so, you know, I just hope that we can, you know, get to that point. It seems like in some of the debate and conversation is maybe we should never have even thought of this in the first place, except for the fact that we knew, and I think everybody can say 100% without a shadow of a doubt that I-40 was one of the most deplorable interstates, or sections of the interstate that you would find in the whole United States of America. And that, without a doubt, had to go. And that, without a doubt, had to go. Whether it's a historical division or whatever, I don't think nobody can debate the fact that that had to go away. And I think the other question, the other issue that we all know is that coming from downtown, when there is major traffic congestion because of whatever, whether it be business, whether it be events, it is a serious issue that needed to be addressed a long time ago. And so I just thank everybody for being a part of this process. And I think that, you know, it's obvious that the door is still open, and the windows are still raised, and at some point in time, it's going to get real cold, and it's going to get real hot, and we've got to do something to control the climate.
Meg?
That's an interesting comment to follow. I'm not sure where to go with that. I have notes all over my page, and I'm going to try my best to be very concise, but I'm going to add my own piece of historic fabric to this. I was a citizen when David Strebe began presenting this process, and Fred Hall was chairman of the chamber and was part of the business community that looked at this. And I think it was clear that the business community originally was not in favor of Alternative D and moving the highway so south for many of the reasons we're discussing this about today, which is access to downtown Oklahoma City. I agree completely that this Boulevard has always been a linked piece. It wasn't a separate add-on as a mitigator. It was a full-fledged partner to the proposed redevelopment of I-40 in Alternative D and moving it south. It has been linked from day one, and I think we need to think about it that way. We have now had a process, and I think it's extremely important to recognize that the world has changed in 12 years, and the city has developed in lots of ways that none of us could ever have expected. And the thought of replacing the old I-40 with a new elevated structure is not in keeping with current urban planning, walkability, discussions about how to develop the rest of downtown. I think it's been a very important process that we've looked at this carefully. I believe we hired the best consultants we could that were out there, that both were engineers and were urban planners, to look at our neighborhoods and to try to come up with the best solution. That solution, in my mind, is a compromise, but it's one that accomplishes many of the goals of each party. We have a plan that is substantially more at-grade than it was before, yet we're dealing with a very complicated intersection at Western. And I think the consultants, I think the public, I think our staff, I believe everybody has been very responsive to requests for input and requests for change. I've asked for a lot in this process, and I'm very appreciative of the consideration and actually incorporating a lot of those changes into the process. Russell, I'm going to argue with you a little bit that having square blocks is critically important. Midtown is one of the coolest neighborhoods we have in this entire city, and it's not square blocks. They're triangulated blocks. They're interesting areas. We've been able to horseshoe Saturn Grill into a corner on the backside of a building. There are lots of interesting ways to create a sense of place, and it's not all straight blocks. And I have to argue, I'm not sure my friend is still here that talked about New York City, but there is no better city that's north, south, east, and west than New York City, with Fifth Avenue as the dividing line. I mean, that's the way you talk about where you are in New York. And so, you know, the grid is very important, but think about Broadway in New York City, which completely travels and cuts the city across from one side to the other and creates triangular lots all over the place. It's part of a very interesting Amsterdam-Columbus Broadway is a very interesting intersection in New York City. It's built on that triangulated space. So I don't believe we're making a mistake. I've heard that comment that we're about to make a mistake. I don't believe we're making a mistake. I think it's time to move on. I think this is a really important step for Ward 6, and it's an important step for all of Oklahoma City. And so I am in favor of moving forward with Alternative A. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. David?
Well, this is coming from somewhat of a layperson's perspective, and I certainly have not spent the time that some of the members of council have studying this. But to me, it seems like we're getting close to a question of, should we keep the existing grid, or should we have a Boulevard go through downtown Oklahoma City? If that's like Councilman Shadis and White's concerns, I mean, if we're down to those two questions, I would respond to that by saying that I don't think the Boulevard hurts the grid system. And Councilman Shadis, for example, your example of coming down the Boulevard and cutting over on Reno versus continuing on, I think that's an example of what we all learned to do. You know, native Oklahomusitians just learned how to get around the city better through trial and error than people who are visiting the city. So I think that would be an example that, and there'll be quite a few other examples, people just learned how to get through the city better than the established roadways. I don't think that's necessarily saying that a particular road has problems. We just learned how to get through the city quicker or easier. So I don't see this as necessarily a problem or even creating any type of a barrier. The fact that we're elevating a section of this Boulevard, and it's a fairly small section that we're talking about as it goes across Western Avenue, to say that's a problem, I think it indicates that we can no longer ever consider building another bridge in Oklahoma City, which I think is short-sighted. This is not the same as the old I-40, both in appearance or in any other barrier status. It just provides mainly a grid, but it does curve. And just as Councilwoman Sauer suggested, Broadway curves beginning at the south of Central Park, and then it goes southeast throughout the downtown and lower Manhattan. And it's a beautiful street. It does not create a problem. It's fun to go up and down Broadway. I think people may learn that it's enjoyable to drive along the Oklahoma City Boulevard. At least, that's what I hope happens. So, but I do have some concerns. One, I am a little bit concerned. I think Exchange Boulevard is a very important roadway and certainly does connect downtown Oklahoma City to Stockyards. And I would truly caution, this is from an older person's perspective, the idea of putting in a roundabout at Third and Exchange. It may be an enjoyable way to get around for younger people, but as we get older, traditional traffic lights, I think, work fine. Same way with the intersection of Reno and Western and Exchange. I know people are concerned about that and want to, you know, cut the access of Exchange earlier at Third and Klein, but I think it's great to just let it come all the way through its current status. And I've got a lot of hope that Stockyards will continue to grow and prosper, and the importance of that part of the city will be seen by more and more people, and will have even a stronger connection. I hope the same for Capitol Hill as well. I don't see this Boulevard as creating any type of a barrier or any type of a problem. In my final comment, I do want to suggest, and Mayor and city manager, I'd like for your input, that we make a formal request to ODOT to provide for a right-turn lane on Western Avenue onto the new I-40, similar to what we have on Shields Boulevard. Again, what I'm trying to say is, as you're driving south on Western to access I-40 and go west, the fact that we do not have a right-turn lane creates more of a traffic problem than this Boulevard could ever, in my opinion. And it could be so simple to eliminate by just having a right-turn lane added to Western Avenue, as well as considering changing three lanes one way and three lanes the other way, depending upon the time of day. I think that's an excellent idea. But again, final comment, and I repeat myself, and maybe that's a sign of experience as a politician, I don't see this Boulevard as a problem. If you compare the existing grid, we don't have much in the way of walkability or any reason to walk along Reno Avenue or Sheridan or California. I'm not saying a few blocks. I'm saying from the east side to the west side of downtown. This Boulevard may provide the incentive for people to walk more based upon my understanding of how it's going to be developed. And I would say it's got a lot of positive ideas. Thank you.
Gary?
Well, to keep the mayor from calling me on my three minutes, I'll try to not repeat a lot of stuff that's been said already. I do appreciate the comments and the description of the fact that the Boulevard has always been a part of I-40 and the Plan D or whatever. I can tell you that the flow in and out of downtown with the new I-40 was a significant issue and will be a significant issue, and the Boulevard has always been a key part of that. Whether you like it or not, you have to think about what you're going to do with traffic when I-40 shuts down. From somebody that's sit-up on that thing in the wee hours of the morning when it's completely shut down, and you have to put all of those out-of-town people and that significant percentage of over-the-road truckers somewhere. You've got to get them somewhere. It has to be something that an out-of-town person or a trucker can get off of I-40 and stay in a fairly decent pattern until he can get back up on I-40, or you're going to have major problems. So it's always been a part of the egress of downtown. And I, it's just, I can't stress enough how important it is to think about that. I don't see, it seems that some people want to make this a fight between those that want the nice urban feel and economic and environmental development and assessment and all of that, and those that want to get in and out of downtown fast. And I don't see it that way. I think it's a compromise. You can't make a decision solely on, I want this or I want that, when you're talking about something as significant as this. It has to be a little bit both ways. And I think what the plan that we're talking about today is much, much better and a win for those people that wanted to not create the visual impact and the economic development impact that the original plan was going to make. I also think it's a win for those people that still think that it's important to flow in and out of downtown in a way that's easier than it is right now. So I see it as a compromise for both of those things. I don't see it as we have to pick one or the other, or we're bad if we support one or the other. I think it's both ways. And David alluded to it for just a second, but one of my comments was going to be, people talk about how the Boulevard, we want to do the, instead of Boulevard, we want to make them get on the grid. Why is the Boulevard not part of the grid? We're taking them down into a 25 mile an hour street that has sidewalks, that has four lanes instead of six. Why is that not going to become part of the grid? You are putting them on the grid. So again, I think that, I think that the energy that came out of the people that wanted us to stop and look at this and didn't like the original plan has been good. I think it's been good for planners. I think it's been good for the city, for city council, and I think it has developed a plan that is much better than what we had. But I don't think that we can go and completely disregard the fact that this still is a significant part of the traffic pattern in and out of downtown Oklahoma City with the new I-40.
Okay. I think everybody's had a chance to speak. Pete?
I disagree with Councilman Mars a little bit in that, in this regard, the ingress and egress to I-40 will be solved when the new ingress and egress ramps are built. That's, this piece we're talking about has nothing to do with whether or not we're going to provide the ingress and egress to I-40. We are. That's a given. This doesn't have anything to do with that, because we're going to build that no matter what. It's what's going to go in between those two places that we're talking about, not whether or not we're going to deny ingress, not whether or not it's going to be, the traffic is going to be enhanced. We could do whatever is necessary to build the ingress and egress ramps, ingress and egress ramps on either end of it right now, bring them down, bring the one on the west down somewhere around Pennsylvania at ground level. We could do the same thing on the east side, about the railroad tracks at the ground level, and we'd solve that problem. I mean, that problem'd be over with. You'd have ingress and egress on either end. We'd have two more spots. So I don't think the question is whether or not, if you support this idea, it's not that you support a traffic solution, or if you oppose it, that you are against a traffic solution. I don't think that's it at all, because I think those are going to be fixed. The question is, is this the best way to handle that portion of it that's on the ground in downtown? That's the real question. Eric, did you have time to figure out my, the two questions I had about how many, how much change this is? Because, before you answer, let me say this. I will tell you that this, I believe, as others around the horseshoe have alluded to, I believe this is the best example of public input changing something for the better that I've seen in a long, long time. And I'm going to believe that no matter how this comes out today, because it has been very, very good. And I think it's an indication that this council is committed to listening to people. David, I appreciate what all ODOT's done. That is not my, I've made comments in the past that are contrary to that, but this is a stand-up example of what ODOT can do and how you guys can contribute to it, and I very much appreciate it.
I think to answer your first question, there was how many north-south streets are no longer through, or they don't have the capability to go through, and I may not have picked them all up, but with the Alternative A, we would lose the north-south on Classen. You've got Dewey, Lee, and Chartel that would not have direct crossing access, although there would be access to the Boulevard. Those are four that I could conceive in the immediate area, but once you get to Walker, there's going to be an intersection at every crossing that we previously had all the way over to Gaylord.
So there are four, but they're all wet between Walker and?
Western.
And Western, that you would have been able to go north-south on before, and you're not going to be able to go north-south on now. I'm not talking about being able to get on the Boulevard. I'm talking about going north and south.
But, that's important, because there will be access to the Boulevard where there was not access to the interstate at that point. So it's a bit of a, it's not a yes-or-no question.
It's a little bit of a trade-off. But there are four places where you can't go straight north and south.
With the current alternative, that would be correct. Recalling that the original ODOT design did have those accesses underneath. We had access to Classen, Western, and Reno, and as we talked about the compromise today, that was part of the compromise. I think on the additional access, we were able to reduce the 1,100-foot bridge to maybe 300 feet, so I would say we've returned about 2/3 of what was originally going to be elevated back down to grade.
And that is, that is 2/3 of it between Klein and where it starts to go down underneath the railroad track.
And that would be, that would be an estimate. I mean, obviously, the design isn't 100%, but I would tell you that we are able to reduce 2/3 of what was originally going to be proposed in the year.
And the decision has not yet been made about where it's going to come down west of Klein?
In the vicinity of Douglas.
Which is another block or two blocks?
Yes. It's another block west. Now, perhaps, it could be more, but that's where we need to be able to make some recommendations to ODOT.
How hard is this decision today? This decision today is from?
This is really the Western, Classen, Reno area. But what I will tell you is that ODOT has paused their designs, waiting for us to respond. And so they're ready to proceed with their designs, which would, how they tie into, how does Western, Classen, and Reno tie into that west leg? How does Western, Classen, and Reno tie into that central core area? So they've kind of stopped on our behalf, waiting for us to respond.
It seems to me, just my own view... It seems to me, just my own view, it seems to me that bringing it down as far west as possible without being unreasonable, I don't think it needs to come down in front of WW Steel. That, there's no, I don't see a gain there. But, but once you get past the east end of where WW Steel is, I don't see any reason for it to be elevated. I mean, I just, that's just my own view. I just think the shorter you can make the barrier, the better we're all going to feel about it visually, certainly visually, that's going to make it better, I think. But that's not part of what we're deciding today. We're really, really today, we're deciding about this center portion, right? Is that right? Okay.
All right. Larry, then Ed?
I'd just like to make a brief comment. I appreciate what Eric said earlier about the grid. And for those who want to know what I, what process I went through to make my decision, I had five key criteria that I was looking at. The traffic flow, the development potential, the pedestrian walkability, the bicycle goals, and the overall beauty. And when I look at the different alternatives that are out there, from the grid to the different alternatives in the report, I've got to conclude that alternate A is the way to go, and so I just wanted to make that public. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Thanks. Ed?
There's going to be delay in the implementation of the boulevard, and I just want to make it clear that it's not the public process and deliberation that's going to cause that, which is overwhelmingly a positive thing. They're going to, the Federal Highway Administration in making a decision is going to have to look at what is the purpose and need section, which is what StanTech pointed out in the first page, is a deficiency. And they're going to have a hard time, because there was no purpose and need statement in the original record of decision, and we haven't clarified what exactly we want this road to do. There is going to be an environmental assessment, and I think they're going to find that there are significant social and economic impacts, which will then necessitate an environmental impact statement. And the reason that we're finding ourselves in this position where we have a delay is that we're doing a very radically different concept than that which was proposed 10 years ago. And there was no EA or EIS done just for the boulevard, and that's what's going to necessitate the delay, not spending this much time at council talking about it or having public meetings or, or having public involvement. We, we say that we want public involvement, and I appreciate the public process to date, but can any of us say today that we know the results of the ODOT's public comment section, the two weeks after the December 3 meeting where the public had a chance to send all their comments in? We don't know the results of that. We're not considering it in any shape or form. We have a process that's better, but, but just like we predetermined, or I predetermined in that example with, with the shower with the kids, we predetermined the outcome. We said that this is going to be a through movement, and we told the sizable, substantial numbers of the populace that we weren't even going to study the alternative of not building the curvilinear curved portion in the middle. Realize that this is not a compromise between traffic or urban. There is a real contention that if you eliminate the curvilinear portion and you build your ramps on the side and have it dispersed through the grid, that you're actually going to move traffic better. Forget about walkability. Forget about place-making. It's about moving cars as fast as possible. There's a very real argument that induced demand, the empirically proven phenomenon, is going to create the traffic congestion that we're setting out to solve, and that the grid would move cars in and out of downtown faster. But we're not even willing to study it. On December 4, after the ODOT meeting, I publicly asked for us to ask DanTech to look at that alternative and do traffic simulations and to do different traffic modeling. He's telling me today that he never even got that message. He never got that request that I made publicly and privately on December 4. We are, what I think is happening is a little bit of boundary testing. The public has never been engaged to this level on an infrastructure project, and they're saying, we want to be involved. And we're saying back, we're going to give you the minimum amount to pacify you. It's boundary testing. Each side is figuring out what the other side is willing to do. We, we engaged DanTech only to figure out how to minimize the amount that was elevated, but basically to come back with the same process, with the same outcome, that, that has the same problems with north-south movement. The contention that we can't eliminate the curved portion because of, of traffic, because of emergencies, is, is, there are other ways to handle that, and you're not going to move 90,000 cars down 25 mile an hour corridors. I think that in, I'm asking ODOT to study the alternative of eliminating the curved portion. Please do what the city failed to do. I think if you don't do that, and you present this study and this alternative to the Federal Highway Administration, after talking with multiple individuals on the NEPA process, there's no doubt in my mind, this is a NEPA violation. This is a violation of the process, and you at ODOT are now the only ones who can rectify the process, and that is to do additional study on this option. If you don't do that option, I think it's a violation. I think, you know, we want to be a big league city. If this happened in Chicago or San Francisco, the people would take this to court, and there would absolutely be a legal injunction. The Federal Highway Administration would be sued if this process were, were followed in, in a, in a larger city. I think that, I don't want to discount what the public has done, and we're learning and we're growing, and we're going to apply the principles learned from the boulevard experience to other infrastructure projects, principally the Core to Shore Plan, the Streetcar Route, and the Convention Center site location, which represents as bad an urban planning mistake as a city can make. This year, we're going to see more public meetings. We're going to see more national speakers. We're going to see more analysis. We're going to see more public engagement, more transparency, and more diversity of thought leading to better outcomes and decisions. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I'm second.
Before we vote, I'd like to comment. I'm going to vote against this today, not because I'm not pleased with what's going on for this. I'm going to vote against it because I think we could do better. That's it. Pure and simple. I just think we could do better. This, I, I, I stand by the comments I made earlier about how pleased I am with what's going on up to this point, but I felt like my voting against it, I need to, I need to explain myself. And I, I just believe we can do better. I, I think there are, there are options out here which would enhance this situation, and I don't believe we're following up on them. If, once the vote's taken, and I'm sure how, I can tell you how it's going to come out, but once it's taken, I'm going to be in support of all this. But I, I just don't believe that we've done the best job we possibly could have done today.
The motion is for alternative A?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ready to vote? Cast your votes. Pass is 7-2. I want to give my personal appreciation to ODOT for this continuing process. I know we have a lot of ways to go down the line, but it's been, I guess we're in our 15th year now, technically, of this entire relocation of the interstate. Ultimately, I think the citizens are going to recognize how much better we are, more safely and, and from a traffic ease situation, and it'll be the betterment of everybody. I, I do want to say that, and this was touched upon, there is such, there is a sense here of the urbanist suburbanist issue here, and I, and I think that's fairly accurate. But, you know, we're asking this street to do a lot of different things. We want it to be this place that, that we all can, you know, draw our own conclusions on how you define that. But we also realize that above 99% of the people that live in Oklahoma City don't live downtown, and kind of depends on how you define downtown, but basically, over 99% don't. And if we're successful in continuing to build downtown housing, and maybe we get that to 99%, 98%, 97%, you're still looking at a lot of people that have got to move out and out of downtown. And we are going to stunt downtown development if we don't allow this vast majority of people who live outside of downtown and the core to be able to access it. You cut off the transportation corridors, and you're really going to impact the economic development that you're trying to create. I think this decision was a great compromise. But again, the, the result all comes down to what you're asking this street to do, and we're asking it to do a lot of different things. I think ultimately, I think, I think we'll adapt, and it'll be considerably better than what we had in the last 50 years. Appreciate the process and appreciate all the comments, and certainly all the people that showed up to speak today.